Further ado. If I call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the Kill double Hills Board of Commissioners, thank you all for being here. Thank everybody for in a mask and sitting far apart. Hardly we were here doing this two years later, almost. Let me start us off with the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And as is common for us in these meetings, we're going to take a moment of silence this morning, this evening, as we get started. It's been a tough week, it's been a tough few weeks. We've lost a number of members of our community in unexpected and tragic ways, including our own Mary Quigley who passed just recently, and everyone here is mourning them and thinking of all of the family members and friends who are doing the same across the town and the county. So if you would, please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you so much. Everybody's looking sharp tonight, like a camera to get you to break out. First item up is, of course, our agenda approval. We have an agenda before you received last week. Let me know if you have thoughts about that, or I'm looking for a motion to approve.
May I make a motion to approve this presented?
Excellent. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second motion.
A second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. First item up on our agenda is public hearings, a couple of them here. The first one is the special use application. I will let our attorney, Casey, take us away.
Thank you, Mayor. Alright guys, so I'm going to go ahead and call the Kill double Hills Board of Commissioners, special use application, public hearing to order. I'm going to make a few preliminary notes. This is a little bit different. This is the first one that, at least for this board in unison, that we've had. So, this is a quasi judicial proceeding. Without getting into the legalese, essentially what that means is, it's an evidentiary proceeding. And the evidence that's presented by the applicant and anyone that chooses to speak that has an interest, the evidence presented are essentially converted into facts, okay? And we have to, any evidence, any testimony, anything rendered tonight, opinions don't matter. I mean, I hate to say it that way, but that's the way it works in these proceedings. This proceeding is a fact-based proceeding, so anyone testifying can't testify as to their opinion. You can't consider an opinion in making your decision. Anything testified to must be supported by factual, hard evidence, if you will. So, in the end, what's going to happen here is you'll take the facts, alright, as presented, and you're going to apply them to four particular standards. Those standards are, does the proposed, or, sorry, I'm going to read it another way. In order to grant, you will be finding that the proposed use does not materially endanger the public health or safety, that the proposed use meets all required conditions and specification of our ordinance, that the proposed use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining property, or, in certain cases, the proposed use is a public necessity, and that the proposed use is going to be in harmony with the area in which it is located, and otherwise be in general conformity with the local government's comprehensive plan. So, you will take what you hear, you will apply those facts to those four standards, and if they each receive a yes, then you would move forward and you would approve. So, that's essentially what we're dealing with here at this hearing. So, just a little, little bit different. So, the way, if you want to go ahead, anyone coming up to speak will have to be sworn in. So, Michael, are you taking care of that? Okay, Michael will take care of that. Before we get to that point of offering evidence, Michael, if you would, just call Esther Ralt, please.
May I state your name, please? Respond with here. Mayor Ben Sproul.
Here.
Commissioner Terry Gray.
Here.
Commissioner Ivy Ingram.
Here.
Commissioner Bernard B.J. McAvoy.
Here.
Commissioner John Windlet.
Here.
I'm the attorney of the law of the present.
Alright, thank you very much. So, the way this starts, we're now going to go into the testimony portion of our hearing. So, the applicant is first invited to the podium. It's kind of like a plaintiff in a lawsuit, they get to present first. So, if the applicant is here and would like to speak, please come up and make sure we swear in.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth.
I do. Thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Ben Kahoon, representing the applicant, Newsegrill, here on behalf of my business partner, Mark Caston. I'm really just here to answer questions, if they arise, out of any comments or from the minds of the commissioners with regard to this. It's my understanding that it has been reviewed by the planning board, has been recommended for approval by the planning board. I believe that it in fact meets those criteria that were established by the town attorney just now, and look forward to any questions or perhaps your approval. Thank you. So, if the applicant is here now, if you guys would have any questions for the applicant?
Mayor, I have none. I've read, and I think there's two bars.
Excellent. Yep, I agree.
Any questions?
No questions, I think, pretty smooth sailing here.
Thank you very much. And for the record, we are allowed to take the written application, and that is evidence that has been submitted prior, but you are to incorporate that into this hearing. So, if that's what you're basing your findings on, then that is appropriate. Is anyone from the town, are we going to, do we have anything to add or speak to?
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth. We also are only here to answer questions that you may have about the ordinance, or about the site, or the site plan, and we'll answer any questions that you might have. We don't have anything to add. It was all in our memorandum, which has been presented to you as evidence. The site plan meets the ordinance, and it was recommended for approval by the planning board, and the staff has also supported it because it meets the ordinance. So, I'll answer any questions you have about the specific ordinance or the site plan.
Any questions from Ms. Guns would be the time, guys.
No, no questions from me.
We appreciate all the prep and memorandum as well.
Next on my list, do we have any adjoining property owners here that would like to speak? Okay, come on up.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth.
I do.
Can you just identify yourself?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Tim Lessner. I am a condo owner and a board member of the Use Retreat Condo Association. Our building sits directly behind Neuse's, and I really have no complaints at all with this application. I think it's great. I've been to the restaurant, they've done an excellent job, and we've only been down a condo owner for three years, so I've kind of watched it grow, so to speak. The only question I would ask is, I'm just trying to follow your ordinances and whatnot, but the way I understand it, it's open from seven in the morning till 11:00 PM, and there would be music allowed to be played outside, and I don't see that there's any additional construction going on with this site. It's just, it's the existing patio out front of the building, which is great. So, I only have one question. Is there any way that we could have, because every day when I take my dog for a walk, I pick up garbage, we all do, I'm sure, but it seems like there's trash that blows back there. Is there any way that the owner could, once a week, whatever, just be mindful of trash? I know, like, when they paved the parking lot this summer, there was a kind of a handmade sign that was put up, paving coming, or whatever, and that's still there. There was a little bit of trash back there. I mean, I can only do so much, we all can only do so much, but if the employees, maybe once a, once a week, or twice a week, could just kind of be mindful of the trash that flows and pick up. So, that, and we have a kind of a hedge that backs up to the site, and we use that hedge road, there's a gap in the hedge to walk back there and then go down the street. I would think that most of the folks coming here will be driving, but we will walk, other people will walk. As long as that hedge road just stays on our property or used for our property, perhaps maybe a private, I guess we could do it too, but, you know, private property sign, no entrance, or something like that, I really don't want others walking through our property. Other than that, I think it's a great addition to the neighborhood. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here tonight who would like to speak on this application? Whether for, against? Alright, that will close the evidence. So, what we'll do now, guys, is we're going to go into the decision process, if you will. I've highlighted the four items. If you won't, as you're deliberating, if you will, I can call out each item singly, and you guys can make a decision on that particular item before we move to the next. Many times, Board of Justices hearings, things of that nature, that's how it goes. Sometimes it keeps it a little bit more in sync and streamlined, so if you have no objection, then I'll start with that particular, the first item, our first standard.
That works.
Alright. So, for decision is, does the proposed use materially endanger the public health or safety of Kill double Hills? Actually, take vote on that particular issue alone, voting yes or no.
All those who think that it does cause material harm, please say aye. Any who thinks it does not, say nay. Nay?
Nay.
Okay. That's unanimous. The next criteria, the proposed use meets all required conditions and specifications of the local government's ordinance. So, does the proposed use meet all of the specifications within our ordinance?
All who agree, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. That's in the affirmative, unanimous.
Third standard, does the proposed, I'm sorry, the proposed use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining property?
So, will not, be it correct, will not. So, in the affirmative, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. And that's unanimous as well.
The final, the proposed use will be in harmony with the area in which it is located, or, and otherwise be in general conformity with the local government's comprehensive plan.
Everyone who agrees, say aye. Aye. Any nays? Also carries.
This is a time, if there's, you do have the right to propose reasonable and appropriate conditions and safeguards. If there is anything else that you guys would add, if you will, as a condition to this application, you may do so now, but that is entirely within your discretion.
If I know the board, then let me know if I don't. I would imagine we're not too keen on making any other requirements, but of course, we, in the area of opinion, are always supportive of neighbors being good neighbors, as the gentleman brought up.
Okay. Is that the board's favor?
If there are things otherwise, yeah.
Yes, I mean, obviously, Mr. Lessner's concerns are valid, and certainly they need to keep, you know, their property clean, and maybe avoid traffic through the backside of it like that with the hedges. But, I don't know, as far as restrictions or anything of that nature.
Okay.
Commissioner Gray? I think everybody's good.
Okay, alright then. So, you guys have passed this special use application, then, by an affirmative vote as to all four standards after presentation of evidence, we will reduce this to write, to make sure our findings and everything are within there, and get that squared away. But, proceedings open? Alright.
Thank you to the applicant and to Mr. Kahoon. The next, yeah, I was going to say, the next public hearing is a zoning amendment, which is a little more common for us, but I will let you tick the lead as well.
Alright, so, we will be having some public hearings tonight. The following rules, these are not quasi judicial, so now we're back to our traditional public hearing mode. The following rules of procedure are going to apply to these hearings, however, public notice was published in the newspaper and posted on the town bulletin boards, which meets or exceeds statutory requirements for the subject matter, and a copy of this notice is then filed with the town clerk for entry into the official record of the hearing. The town clerk's going to be recording all oral comments in a concise and brief manner. Written statements shall be recorded in a similar manner and also made part of the record. If speaking, please limit comments to, of course, matters relevant to this issue, and to the time period of three minutes, unless you're speaking on behalf of a group, at which point you would be given a five-minute exception. All speakers will need to come to the microphone, because the statement, again, will be recorded. There's going to be no debates during these hearings, and again, please identify yourself by name and address when you approach the public. Okay, so, this is a zoning amendment request to Chapter 153.310A and 153.311A Cottage Courts and Cluster Homes. Idea being to remove, the proposal being to remove the requirement to abut NC-12 in the commercial and ocean impact residential zones. I do not see anyone that has signed up to speak on this particular hearing, so I'll ask from the audience, is there anyone out there who would like to speak? We good, Michael? Okay, okay. Got it, got it. Okay, okay. Anyone who would like to speak? Alright, I'll turn it over to you guys. And again, this is on the removing the requirement to abut NC-12 in the commercial and ocean residential impact zone. I did go out of order, which is what they were informing me on, so I'm actually on B2 right now, but we can migrate back to B1 after this.
And in case it wasn't made clear earlier, this has been reviewed by the planning board, and I'm ready to make sure, recommended for approval. Earlier memorandum in December 13, 2021. Comments, thoughts? It seems to be a logical leap, and it's just sort of a clerical error, or not error, but an inclusion that would make sense along with the rest of the ordinance, to treat them the same whether they're abutting that road or not. Unless there's any other discussion, we're looking for a motion. Oh, you're clapping up with your hands?
No, I mean, the reason it was written that way was because it was a zoning amendment request that was specifically written to abut NC-12 or the ocean impact residential zone. So, it wasn't a clerical error, it was actually a specific citizen's request, and that's how they, that's how they wrote it.
Gotcha, the genesis of the history.
And that's how the board then approved it.
Makes sense.
So, this is just expanding it to the entire commercial zone.
Yep. Thanks for, thanks for getting me up to speed on the history there. Sometimes I can't remember them all.
There's been a lot.
Been a lot. So, if, the motion is in order, and then we also have the consistency statement. May I make a motion for approval? Excellent. Board of Commissioners finds that the amendment to Chapter 153 zoning, 153.310A and 153.311A Cottage Courts and Cluster Homes to remove requirements to abut NC-12 in the commercial and ocean impact residential zones is consistent with all comprehensive plans and other officially adopted plans of the town of Kill double Hills. And that the application and that the amendment is reasonable in the public interest because it is in unison with our land use plan. Alright, we have a motion from Mr. Windley. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a pair of seconds. I'll let Michael sort it out. Any further discussion on this motion? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. And any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. I guess we'll move back to B1.
So, it's the second public hearing for tonight, however, again, I did go out of order, so this is B1, as shown on the notice of public meeting. This is a zoning amendment request to consider amending Chapter 153.210C, which is the light industrial two zone, to increase the floor area ratio, otherwise known as FAR, for multifamily development. And I have nobody on the sign-up sheet. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? Alright, I'll turn it back over.
Alright, for folks in the audience who might want to know what floor area ratio is, it's about, it's a kind of a controlling mechanism for density for really the bulk of a building. There are a number of other parts of the ordinance that limit the size and scope of projects, including the height, setbacks, and the necessity for stormwater, and septic, and all that sort of thing. So, it's just one part, but I think the thinking behind this is that in the light industrial two, particularly multifamily, we want to encourage housing that is accessible and affordable and workforce-related, and all of these sorts of things apply to this general part of our town. So, I think this has general wide support, unless I've heard otherwise from anybody. So, if I'm feeling the will of the board, we're looking for a motion here, as well as the consistency statement.
I'll make a motion to approve. The Board of Commissioners finds that the amendment to Chapter 153 zoning, 153.210C Light Industrial Two Zone to increase floor area ratio for multifamily development is consistent with all comprehensive plans or other officially adopted plans of the town of Kill double Hills that are applicable, and that the amendment is reasonable in the public interest to allow for a slight increase in intensity.
That works. Alright, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Second. And any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. Move on to Item B3, which is about the LIR and density requirements with cottage courts and cluster homes.
Yes, Mayor, and this is the third public hearing, which is now coming to order. This hearing is to consider a zoning amendment request to Chapter 153.100D, being within the ocean impact residential zone, and Chapter 153.180C, the commercial zone, to add density requirements for cottage courts and cluster homes. So, we are back to cottage courts and cluster homes, again, hence the order that I ran out of. But, in the end, there's nobody here that has signed up, so is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? Alright, back to the board.
Alright, I think this is probably where that idea of cleaning it up came from. Tell me if I'm wrong, that's...
Now, this was a clerical error.
That's the one I was thinking of. I got it switched around, not a lot of things going on. So, this is basically just...
This was an oversight.
An oversight, that we added some rules in one part of the code, and this is where we reference said part in the other part of the code. So, this is really just a little cleanup clerical. So, anyone who'd like to make a motion?
I'll jump in. I'll make a motion of approval. The Board of Commissioners finds that the amendment to Chapter 153 zoning, 153.100D, Ocean Impact Residential Zone, and 153.180C Commercial Zone, to add density requirements for cottage courts and cluster homes is consistent with all the comprehensive plans or other officially adopted plans of the town of Kill double Hills that are applicable, and that is amendment, is reasonable in the public interest because it helps clarify the ordinance.
Very good. We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
For Ms. Ingram, and any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. Now our fourth public hearing.
Fourth public hearing is now coming to order. This, again, is a zoning amendment request. It's to Chapter 153.076A13, Off-Street Parking and Loading. Propose us to add a sidewalk requirement for cottage courts and cluster homes. Nobody again on the sign-up sheet, so anyone in the audience who would like to speak, please identify yourself.
Back to me. We, just for folks who might not know the backstory of this, we have always required sidewalks to be part of a development program of anything that's getting built on 158, and this just loops that in and makes it consistent, so, kind of the one that's a little bit more cleaning up, rather than anything breaking new and different. So, anyone else like to take a turn and make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Alright, sounds good.
The Board of Commissioners finds that the amendment to Chapter 153 zoning, Section 153, 076A13, Off-Street Parking and Loading, to add sidewalk requirements for cottage courts and cluster homes is consistent with all comprehensive plans or other officially adopted plans of the town of Kill double Hills that are applicable, and that the amendment is reasonable in the public interest because it creates consistency with the other multifamily and commercial developments on US 158.
I couldn't say that better myself. We have a motion on the floor. And then we have a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. That is our fourth or fifth, and fifth public hearing. We've got quite the agenda today, which leads us into, thank you so much for help with that, Casey. Thank you so much. The next item on our agenda is public comment. I know that sounds odd, because we've been having a lot of times to comment, but this is opening the door open to anything you'd like to speak about. If you'd like to come to the podium and identify yourself where you live, and tell us anything you'd like to tell us for three minutes, that's what we're doing now, and we'll do it again at the end of the meeting. See someone making their way to the podium?
Hi, my name is Sally Hearn, I live on Bay Drive. My family's, I'm a marine biologist and have been on an environmental board for 22 years. I have some concerns with the permitting of the piers that has happened recently, especially at 31, 32 Bay Drive. This is right next to your public access, and I live about five houses down, but all my neighbors had a fit when they saw the pylons go in, because basically, there's a goalpost out there, and then it's 100 yards. It's a football field, is what we call it. Everyone was shocked at this. I guess people aren't, you know, and myself included, weren't monitoring the public notice time, which is very short for 10 days. It's tough to, to know everything that's going on, but 77 people have signed a petition that I put together to try to take, if you could take some consideration into restricting or limiting a pier length. I talked at length to Ron at Kama in Elizabeth City. He said the best way to deal with this would be to get an ordinance, and that the town of Kill double Hills did have an ordinance. When my parents built our family home at 3146 Bay Drive in 1986, their neighbors built a pier, and the rule was you were not allowed to build a pier longer than your neighbors. So, I'd like to know, and my neighbors that I'm representing, when did this ordinance dissolve, and why did it? Town of Keddy Hawk has an ordinance of 100 feet. So, this latest pier is... So this latest pier is three hundred and ten feet. If you were to extend the pier that you built at the public access, they would crash into each other. So there's, there's got to be some limitations. And being an environmentalist, a marine biologist, I spent ten years with the restoration of Back Bay in Sandbridge because of all the development silt forms when you put in pilings and it kills off the submerged aquatic vegetation, which kills off the crabs and fisheries and everything. So it's something to think about. There's another permit pending for three hundred and fifty feet. So you see where we're going here. It's going to keep going, and I, I just think it's something that you should take into consideration so Kitty Hawk Bay doesn't look like, you know, all piers. I think the town has done a fabulous job with the pier at Hayden, Hayman Street and the three public accesses. Just would like to, you know, some answers to some questions and find out if we could possibly restrict future pier length. Another big point is during Hurricane Matthew and Dorian, my mom's house, there was a pier in her front yard that almost hit the house and a pontoon boat. The boat owner came over and got the boat in five minutes, but left the pier. So it took us two months to take apart the pier and pile it on the street. So nobody wants to deal with a lot of piers coming into your private property either, and that's, that's really what happened during the hurricane. You have any questions for me?
Well, to move to public comment, we try not to do too much back and forth, but we definitely take it under advisement, and we've, we've read your letters, and we appreciate you taking such an interest in the town, and we know that it's been, the rules that are currently in place do not allow us to have a lot of control over it, but that is certainly something that can change, so we will certainly be discussing it.
Okay, but yeah, if we could find out what the ordinance was and, and how it changed, that would be great.
We could definitely look into that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment tonight? Again, you have another chance at the end of the meeting as well. All right, hearing none, we'll close public comment and move on to a response to public comment if anybody had any thoughts.
No, I just want to say, there you go. Sorry. It's an interesting question. I think, you know, I read your letter, we talked about it a little bit with people around and trying to figure out, you know, what, what's reasonable, you know, and why Kitty Hawk did what they did and when they did that as well, you know, to keep it consistent to some level, but, you know, nobody, you know, there probably should be some limit, I assume. No limit sounds, you know, unusual. I'm surprised even Kama has no limit. But, but, yeah, you know, I also live on that, on that sound and certainly understand what you're saying. I guess no change would affect that. It's already going forward, so that's, so you're probably having to accept that, but.
Yeah, I could have filed a third appeal, but it, but, you know.
Yeah. So it, it could change things going forward, but, you know, which, which does matter. So, you know, I appreciate your position, and I think we should definitely talk about it.
Yeah, there are a lot, just for public knowledge, there's a lot of other rules that are in place that are enforced by the state and other, and other agencies that, because it's technically outside of our jurisdiction at the moment.
That's right.
You know, there can be ways that you can work around that, but it's certainly the thing that will be discussed going forward.
We even have to do a extraterritorial jurisdiction.
Right.
To do that. The review process was with Kama. And but as far as, I kind of had a question too, why Kitty Hawk had it? And can we put GPS?
Yes.
Of that area and look at it? I, I looked at it online, and it looked like to me I could understand why Kitty Hawk had to do it because they're in a horseshoe. At the end of that.
They would come together, right?
Yeah, and all the piers would come together. So that's why they restricted it to, I'm assuming that's why they restricted it to a hundred foot because they, they're just in a semicircle there. For Kill double Hills is not, we're in a straight line. And there's nothing in our land use plan that indicates, you know, any restrictions or concerns, anything of that area.
Well, like you said, at the point, it's out of our jurisdiction, so.
Yeah, and.
It's beyond what our.
You know, I don't, I think the question would be, do we want to, you know, try to go for extraterritorial jurisdiction to have any control over that? Now we don't have any control at all, no approval, no denial.
It's your day, it's correct on that. He's absolutely correct.
You're absolutely correct on that, but Kama does have some, some rules for the length of piers. It's not just.
Unlimited.
It's not, it's not unlimited. It, it, they have very specific rules for piers.
My understanding was that it had to be extended because of the submerged vegetation. So Kama is actually the one that extended.
Well, they had, they, they had to have a certain amount of water by several of the agencies that reviewed it, and they, they have to have a certain depth of water if there's submerged aquatic vegetation to have a dock.
Correct.
And they had to get to the depth, but they do have rules on length too. So if you can't achieve that depth in the length that they have, which deals with navigable channels and some other things. And if you look at the Google Earth, it also does address, some of the camera regulations address lengths that are reasonable with the other lengths of piers, and a lot of our lengths are this long. This is not an unusually long pier. We actually have one that was built probably about ten years ago that's, I think, twenty, twenty or twenty-five foot longer. It's between Hayman and Avalon. So there, there's some very long piers because of the depth of the water and the submerged aquatic vegetation when you go for that Kama major permit. They, Kama requires you to go to a certain distance because of the depth of the water and what's under it for environmental purposes. But they do have restrictions. If you can't reach that depth within a certain amount, percentage into the navigable channels and unreasonable with the neighboring piers, then that is their call. And they do have that rule, and that's the only rule I can think of from nineteen eighty-six because the town has never had extraterritorial jurisdictions so that we would not have been able to regulate pier length.
And it's a pretty expensive application and review process because I recall back when we were talking about dock street and, and doing some spraying out there. When you go and deal with Kama on these situations, they bring in a lot of other people, like fish and wildlife, and all of that's evaluated. Charlie, you remember that we had quite a few people we had to talk with.
Just to get that done, yeah.
Yeah, just to get that done. So some of these environmental issues and fishery issues and so forth are addressed in this application by review by that particular state agency.
So really, just to recap, we have.
Right.
Lots of reason to believe that the, that the restrictions that are existing are adequate, but we have new information from one of our citizens and seventy of our neighbors that, you know, might be worth another look. We, we, you know, I think there's, there's certainly a lot of education we can do for ourselves in figuring out, you know, what, what's the best course of action for the town, but at the same time balancing that with property rights. A lot of those properties along there are million, multimillion dollar properties, and part of that value is the ability to have a nice long pier in front of it, which is valuable to those property owners. So we try to balance all those things together, and we appreciate you taking the time and, and, you know, getting this topic to the forefront as well as giving us a reason to educate ourselves further about the history and all the possibilities.
And I'd like to thank Meredith and Cameron for, for the excellent background work they did on it.
I'm going to go there next, Bill. It was great, great work there to keep us informed on everything.
Yes, thank you so much.
So that is response to public comment. Next item on our agenda is introductions and presentations, and we have a presentation of our annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and our award for excellence in financial reporting for twenty twenty.
Yes, Mayor, this evening our auditor will be presenting the report via video, and then will be available by the phone for any questions that the board may have, and then Natalie will present the award.
Can you go?
Yep.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and other commissioners. My name is Bob Taylor, and I am a partner with Potter Company CPAs. As you know, we are independent auditors and have been, been doing this now for, this is our second year that we've completed your, your audit for the town of Kill double Hills. So I appreciate a few minutes on your agenda tonight to present the audit for the June thirty-one, for the June thirty, twenty twenty-one year end. You know, this past year and a half with the pandemic being like it's been, we've had all had to be very flexible in these presentations, and I've done a number of these Zoom presentations. But to be honest with you, this is the first time that I've had to do one where I've had to tape it first. So I'm just sitting here kind of looking at myself and talking to myself. But we'd be brief to just kind of walk you through and hopefully give you some idea of how to work your way through this massive document that you have in front of you. So the audit itself is actually made up of three separate audits. We do a financial audit, and then there also is an audit that's done in accordance with the GAO Yellow Book. And in this past year, the town also was subject to a state single audit. So you will find the opinion letter up at the front of your financial statements, which is our auditor's opinion on our letterhead and then back toward the back end of the financial statements. There's two other reports that are for the Yellow Book audit and the state single audit. And I'm glad to report to you tonight that all three of these audits were done and with no exceptions being noticed. So that's exactly what we hope would be the results of this, and so I'm glad to give you that report. You know, as I said earlier, there's a massive amount of information in this document, two hundred pages of financial information, data and statistical information and just lots of things. And I've always found the best way to, to perhaps get through some of this information and to really understand it was that did two absolute numbers. There are two, two sections in the, one of them is called the letter of transmittal that you'll find on page one, the little V. And what this is, is this is several pages of narrative that have been put together by your finance staff that kind of presents the overall economic climate of what's happening out in Outer Banks and especially that it affects the town of Kill double Hills. So I think that's really a good read through to just kind of set the stage for you of what happened in the fiscal year end of June thirty, twenty twenty-one. And then the next section would be what we call the management's discussion and analysis that you will find on page five. And again, this is a number of pages of narrative information that summarizes far more than what I'm going to do tonight in detail, just the results of financial operations for the town of Kill double Hills for this past audit year. I can tell you that a couple of things, just real high level, you had a very successful, I think, financial year. Your general fund, which you know is your normal operating fund, increased its fund balance by about two point two million dollars. And you had appropriated in your budget when it was filed at the revised budget, you appropriated about four point four million dollars of fund balance in order to balance your budget. Now, as you know, what that means is that you are appropriating to spend money from your savings account. You're appropriating that if you spent every dollar as you had budgeted your expenditures and only received every dollar that you had budgeted to receive, you would have had a deficit of four point four million dollars. But just the opposite happened. Instead of having to go into our savings account, we actually were able to increase our fund balance by two point two million dollars. So you certainly should be congratulated on that. And I think the reason for that were a couple of things. Even with the pandemic, as you all know, that are on the Outer Banks, I mean, you're, the Outer Banks became a place of refuge for a lot of people in the last eighteen months. And so sales tax revenue was, was much higher than expected. And so that just created a lot of activity and a lot of additional revenue for you. And then also, you know, this year that we're dealing with was June thirty, twenty twenty-one. So we started paying for this year back in May, June of twenty twenty, which is right after the pandemic started. So as we went into that year, the uncertainty of not knowing what's going on, what was going to happen, I think there was a significant amount of cost control that was going on. And so as a result, we were able to successfully incur actual costs that were much less than your budgeted costs. So the combination of those two items, I think, is what really led to you having a good general fund year and increase net fund balance. In addition to that, your water sewer fund also had a one point, one billion dollar increase in its net position. And again, a lot of that had to do, I think, with just activities because there were so many people on the Outer Banks and rentals and just the, the other residents there and F homes, and they were flocking down and using their properties for more than ever. Then we saw a much higher increase in, in water sales for the June thirty, twenty twenty-one year, which is something that led to that situation. When you get into page thirty-seven, three, seventy-eight, there's a footnote to your financial statements. And again, this is narrative form that just gives you a lot of supporting detail to, to the numbers that, that you have in your audit report. And then the section after that, we look at breaking it down into section of the financial statements, pages ninety through one, nineteen, or just another whole layer of detail of budget versus actual information for the general fund, water sewer fund, and some of our other smaller sub-funds. There's a couple of pages almost to the back of the report that shows our tax collection activity, and for this past fiscal year, you had a ninety-nine point seventy-three tax collection rate, which is just outstanding, almost one hundred percent, if you believe it. And the statewide average is only, is about ninety-eight percent. So you were one, one and a half percent delta to the positive side on your tax collection rate, which is great. And then I think some other really, really helpful information is in the back part of the report, beginning on page one, twenty-seven, the statistical section. And this is a number of pages that gives a ten-year comparison of financial related data, budgetary data, as well as other demographic information that really gives you a, a good view of, of what's happened in the town of Kings, of Kill double Hills for the last ten years. So I think that's a good place to spend a little time in your financial statement. And then lastly, the, the last two pages is a page that shows the financial assistance that came, both the federal and the state financial assistance dollars that came into the town of Kill double Hills. Not a lot of federal money for this particular fiscal year. It will look differently for year ending twenty twenty-two as we have a lot of the COVID-related mon, monies that have come in, and we will certainly be having to audit that for fiscal year in twenty twenty-two. So with that, as you know, this is recorded. I am joining you live by phone, and so we'll end this recording, and then if there are any questions, I'll be glad to answer them by phone, and perhaps even Beverly may have some comments that she'd like to make. So again, thank you for your time, and I look forward to seeing you sometime live in person.
I have not dialed a number yet. If you do have any questions, I'd be happy to do that. My pleasure.
I don't think I have any questions off the top of my head. I'm up before you dig into it a little bit here. Actually, I'll ask a little section of ten years, what stuff, but it's great to look at.
Yeah, it was crazy. So I'll just, I'll just step out and walk you through your presentation and just let them know that they don't have any questions. You're welcome.
All right. Take off.
Well, I'm happy to be here tonight to present the town's award from the Government Finance Officers Association for the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for June thirtieth, twenty twenty. I don't know if this one is a platinum one that sits behind the wall, and we used to get a plaque for every year, but we've gotten them so many times, we've got a button. So we get a little bit. In addition, we also put a copy of that certificate in our current report so that you can see that as well. Anyway, the certificate of achievement is a prestigious national award that recognizes the highest standards for preparation of state and local government financial reports. This means a government must publish a financial report that conforms to program standards and satisfy both generally accepted accounting principles and legal, applicable legal requirements. applicable legal requirements. Kill Devil Hills has received a certificate of achievement for the last 33 years consecutive, 33 years. Each, each certificate is for one year only. So every year, we try to do it again. Well, we do it again. We don't try, we do it. We believe our current report continues to conform to the certificate of achievement program requirements and we have submitted it to the Government Finance Officers Association. So tonight, I also want to give some much deserved recognition. I'd like to express my appreciation to each member of the finance department for their assistance in the preparation of the report. I want to especially thank Charlene Allen for her extensive role in the report. And I'd also like to present the GFOA Award of Financial Reporting Achievement to Assistant Finance Director Angel Dowdy for her significant work in the preparation, compilation, and let me find it, and review of the report. Thank you very much, Angel. And also, I want to thank the mayor and board of commissioners for your continued support for maintaining the highest standards of professionalism in the management of the town of Kill Devil Hills finances. So thank you very much. I wanted to. I did want to mention real quickly that this year's report cover, this, this picture is in the hallway in the, I call it the, I guess we're in the, we're in the east wing. We're in the east wing. I saw it and I contacted, I always like to contact the young artist before I use it. Anyway, he was very appreciative and only thing he requested, he sent me a digital copy, because we all liked it. And he sent me a digital copy, but he did request a picture of the man. And we just.
And I'm a photographer.
At some point, we even hold it and I'll email it to him.
Glad to do that. Glad to do that.
So, yes. Apparently, he has been commissioned from the White House and the Kentucky Derby and various places because he does in my town.
Ah, I'm a fan of his collection.
So, I mean, pictures. But anyway, but thank you.
That's fantastic. Just great to see you.
Before we move on, as kind of a segue from, from the budget audit presentation, what we would like to do, if the board is okay with this, is at our next meeting, January 26, have a budget guidance session following the business of the night. With this agenda that is as long as it was, I think maybe we'll have a lighter agenda for the second meeting in January and give us enough time to do that. So we'll just add that on to the agenda.
That's incredible.
Okay, thank you.
And a huge thanks from all of us to you for how hard you all worked to do that 31 years in a row. We are super proud. And 32, 33.
33.
Oh, sorry. You're right there. 33.
On your count.
That's why I'm not a accountant.
I lost that. I lost that in those 33 years.
All righty. But thank you so much for what you're doing. We appreciate you making us all look good. Next item of business is old business.
No old business.
I don't think you have any old business. New business, we have a town charter amendment that I think had its genesis down at this end of the table. But we are considering making some changes that take multiple steps. And so I guess it's several as well. We are looking at taking the first big step.
All right. You know, Mayor, I've reviewed all the information from the town attorney and from the assistant town manager. Both of them have done excellent job in outlining what we need to do. I think that we need to do it. I'm of the opinion that we need to go ahead and move forward. And I would, I would say that after discussion, I'm ready to make a motion. So.
I agree. And I think it's worth clarifying for public purposes that this doesn't impact your current or even the next election cycle. So to make that clear.
It can affect the next election. That's up to when you set it.
Okay, when we set it. But as it's set right now, it wouldn't. Or as.
That was what the proposal was, that it wouldn't.
Okay, so you're, you're saying you were, you want it to go into effect in 2027?
No, I, I think what, what they're saying, because I remember this from our last meeting.
Right.
This doesn't extend the current term.
Right.
Oh, no, 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 I understood that.
But it can go into effect when his seat comes up the next time, correct?
Right.
Was that the will of the board?
My intent was that it would.
Yeah, I think.
My intent was that he would run again for a two-year term.
Oh, okay.
Oh, we'd ask.
Okay.
Now, maybe, maybe that was misunderstood, but I didn't, I didn't want any special favors to.
No, and that's at the pleasure of the board.
Yeah. So, but that, that was my.
I was sure it was written that it had to be once you.
No, it's, no, it's up to, it's, you, you would set the election.
So it would be okay to do it that way?
It would be okay to do it either when his, when this current two-year term is up and your seat and Commissioner Windley's seat is up for election. Or you can wait.
Another two years.
Another two years. It's totally.
That's what I was thinking, was waiting another two years. So, but I mean, I'm open for a discussion.
Yeah, I, I mean, I understand why. Maybe just you want it to be out far enough and to be fair to general public to keep it out, you know, from the existing mayor and any, that's why, I think that's why Terry, he certainly loves Ben. Certainly, we think he's doing a great job. But I think that's why he wanted to avoid that appearance that it was.
Yeah, I wanted to avoid the appearance that was done for him.
I under, I understand that, but I don't, I don't see that as, I don't see that being the appearance because his new, his new term just began in December.
Right.
Right. And true.
Right, it's still two years. And anyone, anyone could run against him for the two-year seat. So I.
And anybody else, you know, I'm open to what you guys want to do. I just thought that was a fair way to go about it. And I'm, I'm not saying that doing it in the next election's not.
But no, we, we must have misunderstood. So what, what pleasure the board.
I think it is, we have like four steps to, to correct, including the public, the events, whatever way. So.
Yeah, Michael and I were just talking about that. So tonight, that, it's correct, we're not passing anything tonight.
Right.
But it is, so you'll adopt the resolution of intent, which is what you guys are voting on tonight. At that point, we have to have, within 45 days from tonight, if indeed you guys elect to adopt the resolution, we must have a public hearing. But there's still no decision made at that public hearing. All right? So once the public hearing is held, essentially, you're obeyed for another minimum or maximum of 60 days. And then within 60 days from the public hearing, it must come back for consideration on adoption. Now, one point, which is what Michael and I were just talking about, by statute, i- if you guys want to extend this beyond the next term, okay? So in other words, it does not apply to the next time the mayor's seat comes up. And we're going to need to specify that because if we adopt as, if we adopt and don't state otherwise, then it goes into effect immediately with, within 90 days of the next, as long as it's adopted within 90 days of the next election, which we of course will be doing. I mean, it'll, it'll be back before you before then. So if that's the, the pleasure of, of the board, then we need to make sure we're putting that in the resolution, that it wouldn't go into effect until X election year.
So we could still move forward with this.
Absolutely.
Just so I can clarify.
It's just to the resolution.
Without putting a date on it.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay.
That's just a motion to approve the intent.
Yes.
So yeah, I think we're 100% all involved, all for.
The intention.
Marking the intention. And we could work on the details.
Do some thinking on the date, when to start it.
Later, yeah.
And I don't know if I was to do it that way either.
Yeah, not either.
I think that was a fair way, either way to do that.
Now is the right time to bring it up.
Yep.
Now you can consider it. It's when it comes back.
There's a variety of ways to look at it. And, you know, like the town manager said, you know, it doesn't appear that way to her and it probably doesn't appear that way to a lot of people. And I think it all, the whole idea came with an abundance of caution to be.
And I'm just probably trying to be a little over cautious.
Kind of, sure. Nothing wrong with that. Be cautious.
One question, one comment. My understanding was the same as Commissioner Grace for the timeline for it to take effect. I was reading through this. My question was around the third paragraph about the language on the mayor's voting rights. Is any extra, if we need to make any changes to what currently exists or what we're just leaving as is.
This is just a clarification. It wouldn't, it wouldn't have been something that we would have done without this being brought up. It's kind of a over the house.
Yeah, so you're not, because that would be a change to the town charter as well. If you were going to try to now make it to where the mayor's voting rights are limited, tiebreakers. But you're set up as an odd-numbered board. So it makes a lot of sense to continue with the mayor, whoever that may be, voting a, as, as the commissioners, as the remainder of the permission. That's correct.
Okay.
So no changes to that. It was just a.
I agree, even as.
Yeah, absolutely.
A third normal voting member.
Standard, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. He needs to vote on everything. He needs to vote on it. We'll never make this again.
It seems, and it seems that it's clear, I mean, with the research you guys gave us that four years is the, is the majority.
That's the max, actually. By statute, that's the, the minimum is two, the max is four.
And you see a lot more four than you.
I put in a memo, actually.
Yeah, it's in the memo there.
Internationally, actually, it was 45% or four years on an international level.
Well, and, and. No, yeah, but it saves money. You know, save the town money from an election expense. So I, I just, you know, I feel like it's the right thing to do.
It has a lot, a lot of benefits and not too much downside, I think.
Yeah.
So definitely not a motion I'm making, so. I'm supportive of that.
I would, I would believe that the board of commissioners adopted a resolution of intent to consider an ordinance amended in the town charter of Kill Devil Hills to change the mayor's term of office to four years and setting the date for a public hearing February the 7th, 2020 to 6:00 p.m. The coverage.
Yep. It's got to be, actually. I was just thinking about that, to be within that 45-day window. It's got to be our next meeting.
The first meeting is February, not the next meeting.
Right, so, yes.
We have a motion for Mr. Gray, a second from Mr. Windley. Is there any further discussion before we move on? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed name? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Gray, for bringing this idea forward.
It just makes sense.
Wait, is it committee or me? Wait. Committee reports first.
Oh, yeah, committee. Okay, I'm sorry. Got excited there for a minute.
I'd like to invite Sue Kelly to talk about the work season of excellence.
Good evening. My name is Sue Kelly, 211 C Village Lane, on behalf of the Community Appearance Commission. I'm Melinda McGawski, who's the vice chair of the CAC, and I spent a lovely time at the last day of our holiday bazaar. And I just wanted to say it was really, really nice. The vendors were great. It was a very nice activity. The next meeting of the CAC is Thursday, January 27 at 8:30 a.m. in this room. And we will be taking up the issue of the live oak trees that we are prepared to give away. I'm not sure what else will be on that agenda. And lastly, I would just like to express my appreciation to Ms. Mary for all the fine help she gave the CAC over the years. Thank you.
Thank you. I love, so it's a good thing. Any other committee reports? All right, then we are looking at commissioner's agenda. Start nothing tonight.
Nothing.
I just wanted to thank the town staff for all they did for the holiday markets. And I haven't really had a meeting since the, the end of all that. And I just, it was wonderful. I think it got great public feedback and the lights looked incredible this year as they always do, but just seemed to be a lot more this year. And, and I think it went really well and it was really successful. So thank you to all of you for your work with that. It was amazing.
Great first year there. I think you're right. A lot of people saw the lights for the first time. We might not have gone back in that area and it's, you know, it had been our little best kept secret and not a secret we want to keep. It's one we want to get out there.
Well, and I think with the Polis family not being, it was just a great, you know, I think, just a great.
Best place to be.
Yeah, just a great, great alternative to that. So, yeah.
My appreciation as well. Any other commissioner?
I, I concur with that, but, and also the, the local residents that have, you know, tried to pick up for the Polis house, especially the one on Clamshell there that raised all the money, or the food pantry. That was, that's always great to see. I'm sure, I'm sure the neighbors probably, they, they, they see a lot of traffic on that road. But, but it really does boost everybody's spirit and, and it's really special and really great that they gave back like that. So.
I was just going to comment when we heard the financial report that, you know, Debbie, you got a heck of a team. I mean, from one end all the way to the other, best person in the world to handle the, the finances right here. I'm impressed with all of them and like Ivy said, with the, with the lights and the market. And I mean, I mean, did a great job and all the town staff that put all the lights together. It was a heck of a community event. So, I mean, can't say anymore. I mean, thank you very much.
Thank you. Pass the word on.
Yes, couldn't say it better. It's, it makes everybody who lives here feel better and makes everybody and the staff come together to have a common purpose to, you know, put our best foot forward. And it just feels good all around.
I just think we're going to have some great discussions at, you know, our retreat and expand some stuff. So, you know, Mayor, you talked about that, you know, worked on some different projects. And so, more thought?
Yes, so later on in the mayor's agenda, we'll talk a little bit about dates, but rescheduling of the, of the retreat. So we can talk about the big picture and use this as a stepping off point for other, even bigger or better things and see, see what we can do with that event next summer as well, as we've got, you know, Meekits Park coming online slowly but surely with all the delays that happen. But, you know, it's going to be incredible space to, to use as well. I wanted to thank Ivy for chairing in December when I had an unforeseen rescheduling that happened in my life. And I appreciate you taking the help for me there, running the gavel. I was bummed to miss the last Christmas event while I was out of town. I just wanted to mention Mary Quidley one more time. You know, we, we mentioned that we've been winning that work for 33 years. Mary worked for the town of Kill Devil Hills for 37 years. Was, I believe, the first town clerk, if I'm right? No, first.
She was the first full-time employee in Kitty Hawk.
Oh, with Kitty Hawk, okay.
And then she, I think it was five years in Kitty Hawk and then she came to the town. She actually started as a tax collector here in Kill Devil Hills and then became the county clerk.
And wasn't, didn't, wouldn't she come out first ever?
Yes.
County clerk?
Yes.
That's what I was saying about, yeah. But, you know, we are fortunate to live in a place where we could have somebody who's dedicated to the town for that many years straight. It's, it's not something that most people even imagine happening in their lives anymore to, to stay in a career. It can only be, you know, you, you can't overstate how much that makes your team and your coworkers, your family. So it was a big loss and we, my personal condolences go out to everyone who worked alongside or knew or is family. I remember meeting her many, many years ago. But you guys worked side by side and I, I, you know, I feel for you. It's, it's a tough week. And we lost a fellow who was in my business, you know, every day for 10 years. And, and you don't expect these things to happen. It's, it's always too soon. And we think of that other family as well, the, the loss of a teenager this week. Some more lighter subjects, anything towards the future. We have, we are rescheduling our, our retreat. So I was going to ask everybody to get out your phones and calendars and see what might work for you. I think we've been talking about a Saturday, nine to one-ish, if that works still for everybody. everybody, and it looks like we're probably pushing into February at this point, unless somebody saw something earlier. I know you said you had a lot of things coming up, but why don't you start first and see what's.
I could do February fifth.
February fifth works.
November fifth.
I could do February fifth. Have to move my haircut, but I could do that. Doesn't take much to do this, head of hair.
What about, I don't know, but the fifth, the twelfth might be better for me. Is anybody available on the twelfth?
On the twelfth and the nineteenth, the twelfth, third and nineteenth. Mayor, if I may, with the town, we're having some issues with COVID.
Oh.
And not just COVID, but there seems to be COVID flu, COVID strap, COVID and bronchitis. If you would consider bumping this out to March, we would greatly appreciate it to kind of give us a little wiggle room, because we, some departments are just too much skeletons right now.
Well, and I think that just gets us in general past.
Hopefully, past the holiday, and now we're dealing with, you know, New Year celebrations, and I think if we can, we can get through January and February, I think March might be better for us all.
I think so too, and I think, you know, we're all back in masks, but we're currently at double the highest rate of infection that we had in Derek County, and that's less than it is in other parts of the state that is in here.
And I think we all agree, there isn't anything pressing that couldn't wait until we're sort of through this peak.
Just want to have enough time to be able to massage things in the budget before we get into that.
Well, and, and also the, I know Commissioner Windly and I had a discussion last week, some of the things that he was talking about, I pointed out to him, would be perfectly suitable for the budget discussion. So, you know, things like that, we can talk about at our next meeting.
Right, and get some of that out of the way there, too.
And give us some guidance on what you'd like to think.
Particularly in the next year or two years, and then we'll kind of look at the two-to-five-year plan when we go to our retreat, and really think about the big picture, how it all fits together, some unique opportunities, hopefully we have this year.
Is there a date in March then?
March twelve? Do they have anything on that day? March twelfth, Saturday?
Dang, I'm going to be on the twelfth through the probably eighteenth. It's spring break starts.
Oh, it is.
Oh.
For the, for NC State, I don't know.
College Spring Break. College Spring Break, yeah.
College Spring Break, sorry, yeah.
The twenty-sixth?
I actually could do the night, I think I'm coming back on the twenty-sixth. You're out of town for twenty-sixth?
Twenty-sixth, yeah.
Oh, gosh.
Back to March fifth?
Fifth.
March fifth might be good, yeah.
Jude, that's no shoe, I will not join.
Yeah, March fifth.
Yeah. March fifth, huh?
Does that sound good to you, Debbie?
Yes, it looks good.
All right.
Sounds like what it is.
It's not easy to get five schedules.
It is tricky. It's tricky. I went on the school board by seven, it was like, try next year.
Never know.
All right, March fifth, that's super. That was, that was my main thing, and just checking my notes, see if I've forgotten anything. Think that is it, town manager's agenda.
I just wanted to thank Commissioner Ingram, back in December, I guess it started in November, the idea was raised to, for the employees that have doors to decorate their door for the holidays, and Commissioner Ingram and her daughter were our judges. Not sure about Commissioner Ingram, but her daughter took it very seriously. She took it very seriously. But everybody did enjoy it, and I appreciate you taking the time and having.
Thank you so much for having me, it was a wonderful, it was a wonderful experience, and it was so creative, I mean, really, it was every, one right after the other, Emmy thought she had picked her one, and then she was.
I got most believe.
And then like a couple of days later, she went, and like, oh, I, I feel bad, I should have picked Michael for, you know, and like, she would go back and just remember like which ones, and she was, she was like, two or three days later, she was still like, I don't know, Mom, I don't know if I'm, it's okay. It's okay. Michael had to have the airpave, it's okay.
Somebody likes to win.
Thank you. That's all, man.
All right, then the last is the town attorney's agenda.
I've got nothing tonight.
Page two, consent agenda.
Okay, it's not as long as last month's.
All right.
The minutes from the December thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one meeting, month of report, November twenty-twenty-one, budget amendment to record wellness grant funds provided through the league, partnership annual report, Naxhead Woods Ethical Resort, this is from Aaron McCall, the Northeastern Region of Stewart, that submitted the twenty-twenty-one annual report, which highlights their operation. The annual certification firefighters, approval of the consent agenda will record the board's certification of the fire department's roster. And lastly, scheduled public hearing, amendments to the Kittlewood Hills zoning map. This discussion began with staff between the engineer for the Durham Care County Schools on an expansion of the existing teacher housing, and determined that it would also be an opportune time for us to include some minor changes to existing zoning laws to make the area more consistent with the use. Planning the board has recommended approval, moving it to the board for favorable recommendation, and the staff recommends a public hearing be set for January twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two at six P.M. Approval of the consent agenda will schedule this item for public hearing, staff recommends approval of consent agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
No second, Anna.
We have a second. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
So, I sometimes get caught up in these reports that are sent out from the different departments and so forth, and I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention that, and our fire chief's here tonight, and, but they, they had an increase in their calls for the total number of incidents, and they still reduced their response time by seven seconds, is what, what I'm reading here, is that right, Chief?
Yes, sir.
And I, I don't know how they keep doing it, I mean, it's just phenomenal. They had an increase of ten-point-six percent in the incidents that they responded to, and they still reduced their response time by seven seconds. That's all, Chief, doing a great job making us look good.
Thank you all, Commissioner.
Line faster, slide down those poles faster. Your poles slide down.
I can't wait to see what happens when we do some improvements of it.
I know. More than seven seconds closer.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you for all the hard work, and for knocking out the great stats, that's always great. Oh, let's see here.
Finalized the motion.
That was it? That was the motion, I was like, where was it? That was discussion on.
No, no.
There we go. So, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And any nay? Does anyone say nay? No. So, motion carries. It's been a long meeting. All right, so we have one more opportunity to have public comment, if anyone would like to speak, to house your time, for a larger piece, until our next meeting. Seeing no one running to the podium, I will close public comment, and no need to respond to that, so there's only one more motion to make.
Mayor, we adjourned.
That's a great motion. Is there a second?
Yeah.
We have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you so much.
Thank you all very much.